Is there a motion to go into a work session?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion?
Supervisor Wong?
Here.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Yes.
Supervisor Levens?
Aye.
Supervisor Demont?
Aye.
Supervisor King?
Aye.
Chair Fitch Cowski?
Aye.
Take five.
Mr. Chair, board members, thank you very much for your time this evening. I know we've got a busy week with a meeting tonight, a meeting tomorrow night. We might have a meeting Thursday night, so we've got lots of meetings this week, but we did want to just, we wanted to take an opportunity to carve out some time this evening, whatever time you guys feel you need, to talk about a couple of financial updates and issues. The first item we'll talk about tonight is just a year-end review of fiscal year '21. Short story on that, as we finished the year extremely strong, but we'll hear more details on that in just a few minutes. Once we talk about the fiscal year, year-end review, we want to spend some time talking to you about the American Rescue Act plan update. Give you the latest information we have on that and start to solicit from board members if there's any particular ideas or projects that you want to make sure we're looking at as we move into finding ways to expend that money. And the last item that we'll talk about this evening is funding of the school and county capital needs. You heard Courtney Rogers' presentation last Tuesday night, all the county's debt capacity and our ability to finance varying options of debt for schools and county projects. This is an opportunity this evening to see if you have any questions on that, to try to start to maybe arrive at some sort of consensus on what you think is an equitable amount for county and schools, so we can start moving forward with that fairly soon. Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Angie. Angie's going to walk us through the first presentation. Mark talks up later.
We're going to take that. All right. Not if there's anything wrong with it. Thanks, April. That makes me feel sorry. All right, speaking of thankful. Okay, as Craig said, we're going to cover three topics for you today, and we're going to kind of tag team through this. And we're going to, we're going to stop at the end of each of the three presentations. If you have any questions, we would like to wait until the very end to hear your ideas about how you want to fund different things, because as Craig said, we finished the year very strong, and we have several sources of funding that we can use. So I think it'll be helpful to you to get through all three, and then we can talk about that part. But we did want to just make sure that you ask questions as we go, so it won't confuse us all at the end, we might forget what's said. And with that, I will turn the beginning of the funding update over to Mark.
Hold on, I'll ask the presentation specific questions, but ideas perhaps.
Okay, good evening. All right, I'm just going to give a recap. We talked about this before, but as we've talked about in the past, county revenue falls into two categories, undesignated revenue and designated revenue. Undesignated revenue is unrestricted revenues, which means it can be used for just about any governmental purpose. Designated revenues, on the other hand, are restricted, which means they are earmarked for a specific purpose and can only be used for that purpose. And so on this graphic here on the screen, what I'm showing is that about 88% of the county's revenue structure is undesignated revenue. About 12% is designated. And so the focus of tonight's presentation is mostly on the undesignated revenue piece, because again, that's the amount of money that you have the most control over. So before I really get into the nitty-gritty details, I want to say that I'm super pleased with where we are financially. If you remember, when I presented the revenue projection for which these numbers represent, it was about two days before the pandemic really hit. We presented the budget, the next day after we presented the budget, the Fed slashed interest rates. And then we went through a downhill spiral for several months. And if you remember, when we finalized the budget, we made no adjustments to the revenue. We let the revenue stand on its own, and then we made no adjustments. I mean, you guys made some adjustments as far as the timing of revenues that came in, but we made no physical adjustments to the numbers through the fiscal year. Our undesignated revenue collections exceeded estimates by 3.9 million or 3.29%. Our undesignated revenue collections included $2 million in revenues that were actually due either in a prior year or not due yet. So we had $600,000 in prepaid taxes that are, that were received in fiscal year '21 that are actually due in fiscal year '22. And then we had 1.3 million in real estate taxes that were budgeted in fiscal year '20, but we received them in '21, and that was due to the penalty and interest being deferred by the board until September in response to the pandemic. So those two numbers, the 600,000 and the 1.3, we really have to pull those numbers out away from our estimates, because they were never in the estimates to begin with. So once you do that, we get real close to the number that we had estimated, and I'll go into more detail on that in a second. Our designated general fund revenues, once we adjust those revenues for CSA and locally administered road projects, exceeded the estimates by roughly 200,000. We were within 1.500% of the estimate. Once we make the adjustments on the undesignated piece, we were within 1.67% of the overall estimate. Considering that we just went through a pandemic with these numbers, that is tremendous. The next slide actually shows the detail here on the year-end results on cash basis. Again, you can see there, when we take everything together on a cash basis, we had exceeded our revenue estimates by 4.2 million overall, again, the 3.9 in undesignated, 300,000 for the designated. So overall, when you look at it on a cash basis, we were over 3.13%. But again, we had some tax revenue in there that was actually due for prior periods or not due yet. So we need to pull that out, and when we do that on the undesignated piece, again, we're at 1.67% above the estimate. On the designated side, again, we make the adjustment for CSA and locally administered roads. We do that because those revenues are tied to expenses and/or they're also, they may come in at a different time period. In other words, we may have the revenue booked in a certain year, but we actually receive it in a different year, so it may cross fiscal year. So in order to really show how our revenues fared compared to the estimate, we need to pull those away. Again, we do that on the designated side. Once we do that, we were within 1.51% of the estimate. Overall, once you make all adjustments, we were within 1.66 of the estimate. Again, very tight considering, again, we were over the estimate. Most localities throughout the state are not showing these numbers. Most localities are showing a revenue loss, not actually making their estimates. We're going to talk about a little more of what we talked about, the ARPA funds and a little bit, some of those uses. At this point, I also want to say Mark's being very modest. Mark spends a terrible amount of time studying and reviewing and revising and asking me and Angie lots of questions. He's really to be commended for how accurate our projections are. I very much appreciate that. If Mark gives you a number you can count on.
So here's that money is nowhere in here.
At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Angie to get those two slides.
This slide looks familiar. It's got a bigger number at the end on the far right, but that is to be expected with information Mark just provided. You would just walk across this as we usually do. The first number is our cash balance at the end of the year. That is our county cash number. Last year, when we presented this to you, it was about $48.5 billion, so that did increase about $5 million. And Mark showed you where 4 million of that came from. The other million is from expenditure savings. So that added out to about $5 million. The estimated funds that we need to cover cash flow because of covering, collecting our revenue twice a year is about $24 million, and that's the amount that it's been for many years. But we run a, we run analysis of that too, and that really is still what we need. I'll show you that in just a minute. And then the third column, this part gets a little bit confusing. The third column is what you guys have already approved for appropriation in fiscal year '22. So you approved fund balance appropriations of $8.5 million. And I'm not going to read all of those to you, but it shows the majority of that were funds that were remaining at the end of the year for the schools that we allowed them to carry forward into the next year for one-time items, county purchase orders, and then reassessment. We had to appropriate funds for the reassessment contract.
And that column is, I mean, that, that is there every year.
It is there every year, and it, last year at this time, it was about $11 million, because we had already appropriated funds for the Auburn Park. But that's the, basically, it runs about that $8 to $10 million at this point in the year. It'll go up probably during the year if you appropriate more fund balance, but that is a reasonable amount that we show every year. And again, those are dollars that you've appropriated, so people could spend those now. The fourth column shows our amounts that are designated for other reserves. These funds haven't been appropriated. We did bring a resolution to you that had all of these listed, and you guys approved them earlier in the fiscal year. But these are funds that are set aside in case something happens and we need to use them. None of them have really changed in their nature. It includes some rainy day funds, facility reserves, capital reserves, and so forth. And that amount is just about the same as it was last year of $6 million. Some of them fluctuate a little bit, like the line of duty. We are self-insured for line of duty coverage, and so we budget a certain amount every year in our budget. And if, and we don't spend that amount, we do have some payments that we have to make, but the balance of that account goes into the reserve for the future year in case we were to have more claims for that. Similarly, the economic development department has a reserve that would carry forward and add to that if they have funds left in their budget, in their incentive funds. We also had appropriated some matching funds for broadband. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, that was in the appropriation column. We have the technology reserve, which changes, it's the same. If the information technology department budget has funds left at the end of the year, we've rolled them into the information technology reserve. So if they have a big project that comes up and they need more funding, it's there for you guys to appropriate. But this $6 million can't be spent unless you take action on that. And then the last column is $14.8 million, which is a large number. But again, it went up for the reasons that we can identify, because of the revenue coming in at a higher amount than what projected, and we did not spend as much as we had estimated. Last year, when we presented this, the balance was about $10 million. Now get ready, because we're going to show you a new slide. So this, I don't know if Mark made this or went up and.
Paul designed it.
Okay, I said, we need to show them this a different way, because it's kind of confusing. Let's, you guys figure out what to do. So we have come up with this idea. If you look back at the previous slide, the total cash that we have is $53 billion on the far left. So that's like the foundation of this house, right? That's the total that we have. And then these four columns, walls, pillars, whatever you want to call them, are the different categories that we showed you on the previous slide. It is important that the cash flow reserve on the left, on the far left, and the undesignated cash balance on the far right are very healthy, because those are like load-bearing walls. They're the outside walls of our building, and those are, do you like that, April? Those are important to maintain, because that's what the bond rating agencies really look at. What our financial strength is really depends a whole lot on that. What our financial strength is really depends a whole lot on that.
I did really like that. Thanks.
Make sure that one made a day, and I said, that's really good.
Yeah, it was, that was perfect.
You know, I'll just add to that, yes, that undesignedated cash balance is as strong as it's been in a long time. However, however, when rating agencies look at the county and look at our core financial strength, as Angie said, they look at cash reserves to make sure you can cover your cash flow in all the periods, and they look at your undesignedated cash. I think Courtney made a comment last week in his presentation about he felt very good about our borrowing ability because our reserves were still very strong. They are very strong, and I keep hoping at some point we'll get that final step and get that perfect triple A credit rating. We're just, there's some things that we're just, there's a whole lot of reasons that that's a challenge for a county of a hundred thousand people. But um that's, that's a really good analogy.
So if you go back to slightly. So is the fourteen, go back one more, is the fourteen million, almost fifteen million, like a great number? Or would twenty million be a lot better? There comes a point where you should be using your your cash too, right? So so what are we looking at? What, you know, clearly years before, gosh, for really, if you look at twenty thirteen, one point five million dollars, you're like, you're just skating by and hoping that nothing is a catastrophe, right?
Well, those, those were the years, if you recall, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, I believe, is when we issued the big debt, and we have twelve cent tax increase. So we were, we were making the budget as clean as we could make it so that we didn't have to have an even larger tax increase, which is why a couple of those years were pretty skinny. Then we had a, in sixteen, we had seven, seventeen, fiscal seventeen, we had six. Somewhere between five and ten is really a healthy year financially. Fourteen point eight is is really, really strong. It gives us the ability to really consider some things that we're gonna talk about a little more later. If we were hitting fourteen or fifteen million every year, to me, that means we either, we need to look at, need to look at our revenues or look at some other, we we defer a lot of stuff. We're gonna talk about that as we get into the next two presentations, but we need to put some of that money to use. You know, but I s- I I would never sit here and say, well, that number's fourteen point eight. Really, I'll spend ten, ten million of that. No, that does, again, as I said, when rating agencies look at the strength of the county, especially after going through this pandemic, I think what you'll hear, if if you hear from them when we go out to issue debt, they're gonna say, I'm not saying this on staff's behalf, but I think they're gonna say the county's been very well managed in this pandemic. And that's a strong reflection on fiscal strength of the county.
I definitely agree with that. It will be very strong when we go out for ratings this year. Another reason, part of the number, some of the numbers are lower is because there there was a point in time that the board decided to transfer, I think, five million dollars in a year from this balance into the capital fund for future projects. And um also, sometimes things have just occurred later in the year, and uh dollars are appropriated out of this fund balance number, so it it will go down. If I show you this number in March, it's gonna be lower than fifteen million dollars. So that's another aspect to that. And as our whole budget has grown, because the dollars are bigger, when the percentages are small, like they are, like Mark talked about, when a slow percent variance we have for budget tax, it's a larger dollar amount. So it makes sense that that's gonna go up. But really, it's very good that this year we were able to maintain such a strong balance.
But this pretty much is like one percent.
Right.
And that, I guess that's the target, right?
That's, that's not the.
One percent. You said five to ten million is strong.
I never translated that.
I was wondering if that might, if that does translate or not, but anyway. Thank you.
And Angie, some of this money is also because of our, you know, we were very conservative with the the, and we deferred and waited on projects and and didn't spend some money.
That's right. And that is right.
And now we'll have a little bit.
And we were very prudent on the expenditure side.
Right, and we will talk to you about that more in a few minutes. This is the cumulative change in cash. I just show you that to show you that I really don't just pull that twenty four million, twenty four million dollars out of the air. I look at a twenty four month period, and I say, if we had no cash on July first, two years ago, if we had no cash and our cash came in and went out, how we bring funds in and spend them, what is the low point? What is the, when are we in the hole the most if we started with nothing? To figure out what our cash reserve needs to be. And it is always in September or October, and then again in April. And you can see that there are two times during this um twenty four month period that it was twenty three point six million dollars. So it continues to be twenty four is the amount that we use.
So what happened in this previous year, in the previous year that you were up, you know?
Well, in December.
Seven million. From twenty three to sixteen nine. Which, from four twenty, April twentieth to um September twenty. Or if you compare September to September, twenty three, five, five to sixteen, nine, two. That's a significant, that's seven million dollars. Doing something great at that point?
No, it's related to, it always, the trend always looks like this over the twenty four month period because in the first twelve months, we accumulate some money, right? We're not spending all of our money. We're never spending all of it, which is a good, strong financial policy that we have. So after the first twelve months, we aren't starting at zero. So then the next twelve months, we don't dip this low. So every year that I've done this, that has been the pattern. More questions? I'm gonna let Mark speak some more.
Okay, at one point, the board had said, you know, we don't get information sometimes until, you know, we get ready to present the budget on our revenue going forward. So last year, we kind of came, you know, this is what's going on with the pandemic. This is what our revenue structure is looking like. So what we thought we'd do this year is kind of give you a, what's going on right now? What are we seeing? Um and then kind of give you an idea of where we see things heading Gordon into fiscal year twenty three. So um for twenty two, which is the year that we're in, um things are looking really good yet again. Um the personal property book values are in line with the values that we budgeted for fiscal year twenty two, which is a good thing. There's two big things that I've noticed in our revenue structure in twenty two, and that is we had a substantial, substantial increase in motor vehicle valuation of existing vehicles, and that was due to an undersupply of news, new vehicles. So anybody that's went out and looked at a lot that any dealer has, there's hardly any inventory of new vehicles on those lots.
Home lots is sky high.
That increase is estimated to provide one million more revenue than I had projected in the current year. And that's in tax dollars, one million in tax dollars.
Not just the timing issue, meaning like.
Hang on a second. It is a timing issue. That's exactly right. So what's going on is we actually added seventy million dollars to the personal property value structure. That is the most that has ever been added, even more than when we went to proration and we had two years of value in one year. Seventy million dollars in value in one year. To put that into perspective, we average around twenty million dollars in vehicle growth per year. That's more than three times the amount of vehicle growth. And it is due to the fact that there are, they shut down supply. So there are no new vehicles on the, on the market. So all of the existing vehicles are now valued higher than what they were before. Why is that important? Back in fiscal year ten, after the collapse, the financial collapse, that started in two thousand and eight, in fiscal year ten, we had a thirty three million dollar drop in the personal property book on valuation of vehicles. At that time, it was because we had an oversupplied used vehicles on the market. So that kind of came out of nowhere. I mean, native values the the vehicles every single year. And we just got hit with that. So in order to respond to that, we had a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar hole that we had to fill. And so what the board did at that time was they changed how we valued vehicles from clean loan to clean trade. Of course, we, we sort of had to take that hit in fiscal year ten, but for fiscal year eleven budget, we went and made that adjustment so that we could, you know, get us back on track. Why am I telling you that? Well, my concern is, is that when the market stabilizes and we start getting new vehicles in the inventory, you're gonna see that same thing happen again. In other words, we had this major peak, and all of a sudden, you're gonna have a reset. The question is, is when is that reset gonna occur? And I can't answer that, but I know that at some point it will occur. Um so what I'm expecting is, is that um that take this money while you can, but expect a reset. And so um, you know, once inventory stabilizes, that's gonna happen. Now, I don't know if that's gonna happen next year. It probably won't. It may be the following year. Uh but I do expect a reset to occur. Uh people that are getting their personal property tax bills right now are seeing their values on the vehicle that they had last year go up from what they paid last year. The other substantial increase is in sales tax collections. Over the past five months compared to the same time period last year, we've seen major increases, as much as forty seven percent higher than the previous year. That percentage is trailing downward um very rapidly. Um it was down to twenty percent higher the last month. And the reason for that is the large infusion of cash from the federal government. People have more money to to spend right now, and so that money is getting spent, and you're seeing. Based on the trends that I see right now, we could be as much as one point five to two point five million dollars over the estimate for sales tax alone. Now, I don't know if that's gonna continue, that trend's gonna continue, but that's where we sit right now when I trend it out. I'm thinking it's not gonna be quite that high, but you're gonna see a substantial increase if things continue the way that they're going.
What's interesting about that, I think, you know, Mark said some months are forty seven percent higher than last year. If you remember last year, that's really when we got into the throes of pandemic. People were ordering left and right online and so forth to be higher than even last year. It's, it's, it's amazing, the money that's been being spent out there right now. My concern also, I do agree, I think it's gonna start trailing downward, but there's also starting to be real supply issues. People, people go to stores and wanna buy something. You know, I looked for a new chair the other day, and he said it'd be two to six months before the chair came in. I said, two to six months? I mean, it's, the the supply chain is really out of whack right now.
I have a question about bullet number two. I mean, what happened in two thousand and ten? I agree with you. It'll stabilize somewhere and, you know. Anyway, do we need to kind of set some money aside for when that happens so that we're not caught by the loss?
Yeah, um, that's a good point. Um something to think about would be, you may wanna take, depend upon, you know, I'm gonna come back to you in spring, and I'm gonna say, well, I call it the spring and the winter, and say, um, okay, here, here's where our revenue sits. And um, you know, and I was getting ready to say this, it it, these things that are happening right now make it difficult to project what's gonna happen because there's a lot of, a lot of pieces of the puzzle that are not normal. Um when things are very linear, it's easy to project what's gonna happen. When you have a bunch of craziness going on, then it's difficult to know. So it may be in the board's best interest to set aside some money as a sort of cash to capital where, you know, you can spend it one time, and then when it does hit, then you can pull that expenditure out of the budget, and you won't have a loss because it's not an ongoing commitment. So that may be something to think about.
And it's also another reason that you're not gonna hear us tonight when we talk about that fourteen million dollars in year end overage, if you will, or excess revenues. We don't appropriate a whole lot of that or anything because in essence, it it falls to fund balance, which sets it aside, and that it's in the county's fund balance should we ever need.
Um the other question I had was on that, the third bullet. Are we getting paid by the state the sales tax a lot more effectively than we had been in the past, or how's that looking?
The short answer to that is yes, for sure. There's really no way to go back and look at what may or may not have been paid, but it's definitely ticked up considerably with the online sales, and it appears that's all coming through, so.
Okay, so let's talk about twenty three. Again, we're on track. We're likely going to exceed our revenue estimates in twenty two. Um, you know, we've got strong revenue numbers on those two categories. The other one is real estate. Those numbers are strong as well. Um so I expect us to exceed our revenue estimates in in the current year. But there are some concerns that I have going forward. There's a tremendous amount of uncertainty in the economy. You know, we have inflation. It's a known issue. Interest rates, we're not exactly sure what's gonna happen, but I think the Fed, and Courtney said this last week, he sees interest rates increasing. I think the Fed is probably gonna respond quicker than we thought they were gonna respond or what they said they were gonna respond with. Um we just don't know how quickly that those rates are gonna change. Business inventory is an issue. I know at one point, if you tried to buy a lawnmower, you couldn't even get one. Um supply line issues, um it's not just the supply lines, but there are um labor shortage issues. Um so there's a whole host of things. You know, the the US economy is is a complex economy, and so there's a lot of moving parts to it. And so any one of these things can throw a wrench in how things are going to develop as we go. Um some of the additional growth is going to be one time in nature. When we have that reset, I just don't know when it's gonna happen. I wish I could tell you exactly when that's gonna happen, but um I don't know. Um I think there's high valuations in the stock market. There are some things to be concerned with. But the the positive thing is, is that Montgomery County's revenue structure is probably one of the strongest in the states. I mean, we are one of few that can tell you these numbers right now. Um and we're gonna talk about that when I get into the ARPA discussion. You know, a lot of, a lot of localities have revenue loss issues, and we do not. Um so that's important that, you know, we have a strong economy and we respond well when things like this happens. Um, you know, it's kind of a trade off, you know, we don't get a tremendous amount of growth year over year. But on this, on the flip side, when things go bad, they don't go terribly bad. Again, the timing of the economic adjustment would determine whether or not the growth will still be there in twenty three and beyond. So we'll, we just have to kind of wait and see how this, how this goes. But things are very positive considering where we are. And even with some of these uncertainty issues that are going on in the economy, I'm still very positive of where we're headed into twenty three. All right, so that's the conclusion of this piece, and I'll entertain any questions you have.
That's an awesome story. Thank you. Mark talked about how usually it's linear and that's easier to predict, but could you tell how excited he was to be able to do this? You know, when it is changing and it's, it's real challenging. And he does come talk to Craig and me frequently about thi- these things. And it's, we are very fortunate to have Mark here who understands that better than most people do. And to be able to have the foresight to know what we need to do with our revenues as we move.
I would just agree. Um it's just a testament to your excellence, uh work and professionalism to keep us right within that percentage of estimate and for us to um be so strong financially, well managed for the whole county of Montgomery that we conservative and and this board to take leadership to make sure that, you know, we're not spending money where we don't need to with things not being um in stone. And then um I think it's great that we have this extra revenue and we just need to use it wisely as a one-time increase and not a budget item that way, or to set aside in case it all quickly goes down. Um that way, we're not surprised and can hold, but excellent. This is exciting. Um, that way we're not surprised and can hold, but um, excellent. This is exciting news and good news. Thank you.
Uh, all I can say is, I think I've heard this story before. Look, we're doing great. It's not that bad. I think the crystal ball needs to be polished. All right. All right, so you wanna move to the ARPA presentation?
Yeah.
I'm gonna let it go on, switch it out so I don't knock it off.
We wanted to start with this because number one, we felt it was good news. It's also good foundational information as we go into these next two discussions to, to help you understand what we're looking at in terms of ability to use some of this American Rescue Plan funding. Also might help answer a question that I've heard a few times as well. A lot of communities are using their money for this and this and this. Mark's gonna be able to tell you why those communities may be able to do that because one of the provisions relates to revenue loss and as we just heard, we didn't have revenue. So that, that will, that really kind of limits us, but he'll talk more about that.
So um, I just wanted to kind of give a recap. You know, we've talked about um, the county's allocation. So the county, um, the county's allocation of American Rescue Plan monies is 19.1 million in total. Again, that's um, two allocations. Uh, the first allocation we received on May 19th of this year. And it was for half of the amounts. We received roughly $9.6 million in May. And unlike the CARES Act funding, which was primarily designed for immediate mitigation and for small projects, you know, what, what we've been listening to and what people have been talking about is this is a once in a lifetime opportunity to do stuff for your community. That we may never get another chance to do again. So this is, is lifetime, once in a lifetime changing dollars. Um, and to make lasting improvements to the community. Uh, I wanna talk about some of the key dates. So March 3rd of 2021, that's when uh, the beginning of the recovery period um, started. And so expenses are eligible for items purchased and or services provided beginning on March 3rd. Um, premium pay is the only category in which you can go back prior to that date. December 31st of 2024 is um, that's when the recovery funds must be obligated, not spent. So basically, we just have to have the contract signed at that point for any work that's gonna be done. And then on December 31st, 2026, the recovery funds must be spent and all goods received and worked completely. Um, Treasury is still working on issuing a final rule. The interim final rule is supposed to be used um, in absence of the final rule. And basically what that means is until the final rule is adopted and becomes effective, the interim final rule is binding. And that means that if the county uses the funds in a manner that is consistent with the interim final rule, as long as the interim final rule is effective, then the county will not be subject to a recoupment of funds. So um, they're basically just saying that, hey, um, as long as you're using these funds and in, in a manner that is appropriate to what, what the time period, when the interim final rule is in play, then you won't have to pay the money back if something were to change to a later date. The rub would be is if we decided to do something and then the hadn't taken action on it, then the final rule comes out and says, hey, you can't do that, then we would have to stop before we would do that.
You mentioned something called premium pay can go before. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so um, they have a provision of premium pay. So you can pay up to, I think it's $13 per hour, up to a certain dollar amount um, over and above to frontline workers for having been exposed to the pandemic and, and uh, being a frontline worker. So that's something that you could pay retroactively prior to that March 3rd. All right, so there are many uh, ways that the American Rescue Fund Plan monies can be used. Eligible uses include supporting the public health response, addressing the negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, serving the hardest it communities and families, repay, replacing lost public sector revenue to, due to the public health emergency, providing premium pay to essential workers and investing in infrastructure for water and sewer systems and broadband. All right, so one of the things that we, you know, there's been a lot of talk about what other localities have been doing. And so over the last six to eight months, my staff and I have been eagerly sitting and watching all kinds of Zooms, um, videos, webinars, calls. Um, we've read the interim final rule, I don't know how many times. Um, we've uh, been with US Treasury, with VACO. Um, we have a local government uh, financial network. The GFOA has provided guidance. NACO has provided guidance. The White House has provided guidance. Um, and we actually even went in, part of the, the requirement here is if you are a locality with over 250,000 people, you have to provide a performance report. We even went and looked to see what other localities were doing that were above that 250,000 population point to see how they were utilizing them. Um, and then we've been looking at US Treasury frequently asked questions. Now, Treasury is not going to tell us whether or not a particular use qualifies. They are going to basically leave it up to you to decide that. They're giving you guidance, but they're not gonna say, if you say, can we do this? They're not gonna specifically say, hey, you can do that. But what we've been seeing, common themes, a lot of localities, like I said earlier, are not like Montgomery County in the sense that they did not have a, a financial, end of year financial report that looked like this. A lot of those localities had revenue loss. And so um, if you have a revenue loss, then you have more flexibility than any other category. You can use pretty much those dollars for almost any governmental purpose. There are a few stipulations, but for the most part, you can pretty much do anything you want with it if you have a revenue loss. So when localities are doing all these inventive things, a lot of times what they're really doing is they're doing inventive things, but they're using a revenue loss category in order to do it. So they virtually have, can use that money to do anything they want.
Mark, one thing, you know, a lot of communities, including the town of Blacksburg and town Christiansburg, because they have a lot of hotels, they have a lot of restaurants, they lost considerable revenue from their occupancy taxes and their meals taxes. So, you know, uh, some of those communities can use a whole lot, almost all of their ARPA funds under this revenue loss category. We don't qualify for that at all.
Yes, so there are actually four calculation periods for the revenue losses. December 31st, 2020. Then you can redo the revenue loss again in 21. Uh, on December 31st of 21, December 31st of 22, and December 31st of 23. We did the revenue loss calculation for the first period and we did not qualify. Uh, my gut tells me, based on how strong we were this year and how things are trending right now, that we probably will not qualify again in 2021. Now, 2022, we're going into a reassessment. And so it's highly doubtful with that reassessment, depending upon how the board um, responds with, you know, our tax rate at that point. It would be hard pressed to say that we would probably qualify in 23. Um, so um, you know, and again, a lot of this is gonna depend on how the economy goes, but a lot of these things are gonna sort of be in play. Um, things would have to turn downward real quick in order for us probably to hit those marks for revenue loss issue. Um, which in a certain sense is a good thing. You don't want that, but at the same time, with these ARPA funds, that category gives you the most flexibility. And, and people that have that revenue loss are utilizing it in that way.
Other than the um, example you used in the other presentation about the loss of revenue from value of cars, automobiles, have we ever had a revenue loss year over year?
Yes, um, the year after we had, uh, well, during the economic downturn, we had major, major issues. It wasn't just um, the 2009, 2010. The, the, the hit for us was several, several things happened during that time period. Um, so the, the Great Recession did hit us. Now, we didn't get as hit as hard as some other localities, but we went in and we stripped budgets. We did across-the-board cuts. Um, so yeah, it, it happened. Um, so anyway, um, but I guess my point is some localities have been very creative and, and using those funds. A lot of it has to do with that revenue loss category. One thing that concerns me, having looked at some of those larger jurisdictions is, and this is just my opinion, but when I look at how they're utilizing their funds, in my opinion, it does not look like um, they are adhering to the guidelines that are in the, in the legislation. Um, other things that people are investing in broadband, water and sewer infrastructure, tourism in parks, affordable housing, and then again, that premium pay bonuses and vaccine incentive payments. So those were kind of the themes that we're seeing across the board and how people are utilizing them.
So there's, it, it's legal to do vaccine incentive payments?
Yes. Um, we'll talk about some commitments and options. So um, there's only one existing commitment that I know of at this point and that is the board um, has agreed to set aside up to 7 million of, of ARPA money as a local match for the fatty 2021 broadband grant application. Um, those awards are expected in January 22. Um, some other potential uses that have been discussed, uh, there's been a few uh, discussions about some water projects. So uh, water and sewer will qualify, uh, and then wastewater and stormwater projects.
Would solar be an option, like on new government buildings?
Solar isn't listed as a, as a direct, you can't do general infrastructure and solar is not one that's listed.
Oh, it's water and sewer, not general infrastructure?
Um, because it has its own category. So they've said, hey, you can do these particular infrastructure projects, but general infrastructure, um, you cannot do. Unless you have a revenue loss. A lot of people are doing that to the, the revenue loss. In fact, I know one jurisdiction that like 80% of their money was revenue loss. So they could use 80% of their, their, their revenue directly on anything they wanted to, because they had that much of a hit.
About, um, like, that new, the couple decades ago or a decade plus ago, helped their energy provider clean up all the energy losses along their infrastructure. And so it ended up saving the community a whole bunch of money. Is that part, is there a category for that?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Oh, it, it's interesting in, in, in that interim final rule, it's very specific. When they talk about water and sewer and they, and there is some discussion of stormwater too. And I, why they left the old ones out, I can't speak to that, but you know, as, as we've talked about it internally, that may be some discussion for the PSA because you know, money came to the county, but uh, money could be used by the county with the PSA to improve in, infrastructure for water and sewer.
What uh, what kind of uses would you use it for the stormwater? What would you use that? As in, most of that either private or VDOT?
Most of it is, but they are especially related to government buildings like this one, where we need to make some improvements to drainage systems and whatnot and, you know, discussing that with Scott Woodrum. What's real interesting is it doesn't, it doesn't take a whole lot to run up to a quarter billion, half million dollar project. We had two or three of those that we needed to identify. That's a ready source of funds that we probably otherwise wouldn't have.
Do you know if it could be used in coordination with VDOT? You know what I'm saying?
Probably, but I don't. That's something we certainly could, could take a look at.
Cause I agree. There's a lot of ditch problems in this county.
I know a couple, one pretty good sized one and one very small. Down near Tom's Creek on Brooksfield, every time it rains heavy, that road's closed. Plus the creek comes across.
You know, that may.
An out, a run to away.
That may be a good question. Would that fall under stormwater?
Well, that's what I was gonna say. It may be a good question for us to have Emily and or Scott talk to VDOT about to, I imagine VDOT, you know, the state got a boatload of ARPA money too. And I don't know if they're, I don't know how they've allocated it out to their various divisions.
There are special requirements about, like, the Clean Water Act that are, that go along with using ARPA money for stormwater. So we would have to look at that support too.
The main reason we really wanna go through this again with you tonight is just to reorient you to, to this particular uh, funding source. If there are any projects or ideas that you have, please send me, send it to Maggie. We'll review them and come back to the full board and say, hey, this is one that's been suggested. Does it meet the requirements in either slot or here's a project that was suggested, it actually can slide under this category if that's something the board has a consensus to use the money for. Which is 19.3 million. It sounds like a whole lot of money. This is, we're gonna talk about in the next presentation with depth, uh, capacity. It, it doesn't take a whole lot of projects to go through that anymore. Or you don't, you don't have 19 million hours to seven hours.
Yeah, so that's up to seven of that. We're down to 12. Uh, you know, and just some very casual conversations with Chuck Campbell that I could, I think you could quickly spend a couple of days on the PSA side if you wanted to, just to bring things up to a, uh, uh, it's an opportunity to invest in the future and bring things up so that you wouldn't have to worry about it for another 30 years. And I'm sure we could, but some of this like down Els, we would have to have more and more rate, you know, break that pipe with this.
And that's, and that's kind of what I'm thinking with our, with our treatment facilities. You know, there, there, there's all kinds of places that you can go in and say, hey, we've, we've been, everything's working fine because with breaks we fix it, but here's an opportunity. If we, if we had some money to put into that, get it to a level so that for the next 20 years or so, you wouldn't even have to think about it a whole lot. Same thing with water, you know. Lines that are in the ground that either are causing problems or we know just because of the quality of the pipe are gonna cause problems in the future. It's an opportunity to get those upgraded, not worried about.
You know, we had several breaks down there.
Oh, yeah.
If we could do something like that, because we're having to pay another company in the board, do it all at one time.
Water and sewers fairly open.
Yeah, as long as it follows the, the clean, clean.
The water act, yeah.
Is it allowing to spend it on equipment that enables you to build infrastructure?
No, not specifically. I mean, basically, the way the language is written is, whatever you're gonna do, the, the pandemic had to cause the need. So if you were planning to do something anyway, you certainly couldn't use the money to do that. But because we had the pandemic, it caused the need for this thing. Therefore, you can use the money for, for 90% of the stuff. The other stuff is, oh, and yes, you can do anything with broadband and you can do anything with water and sewer. Be a good time to get a wishlist, list from Chuck as to what he sees as some of the urgent, you know, especially if we can extend water and sewer or, or water or just sewer. For, you get the most bang for the buck. I, I had a request, um, to fail it to reach eight houses, but really only two people have indicated they wanna use it. But with that said, life goes on. Times go on, people sell, new people come in, so that if it's there, they may take advantage of it. And it seems like it's in an area that people would want to because a lot of issues down there, so.
When we run that water line down Tom's Creek, through that section where those people don't have potable water, we can fix that other issue too.
Aggressive is part of that, sure, good.
Um, I'm kind of confused about the affordable housing. Um, you know how CHP and all those people were going to try to pull together a plan for the larger community to start.
a plan for the larger community to start building more affordable housing. You know, my experience at Habitat, you put the money in, but it just keeps multiplying each turn, you know. And so I'd like to hear where they are to see if this would be some help with getting that started.
We had that presentation, what was it? Was it called land grant?
Housing Trust Fund.
Just Housing Trust Fund.
Yeah, they'll be following back up. I can't remember.
The structure for that is not about influx of cash at the beginning. It's more about um, offsetting the taxes to maintain long term affordability.
And I'm wondering now that we have this money, can it be?
It would, that would be a huge pivot for the working group. Um, they've spent, well, we, because I'm on the working group, we've spent eighteen months looking at One Direction. It would be, it wouldn't be something that the answer could come.
Well, we've got like three years, right?
Yeah.
But, you know, to make sure that we don't spend every dime before we look at some opportunities that will.
And and I'll say that it's three, you know, three years is gonna come fast, so we we wanna keep thinking about it. The other thing, one reason we've been a little bit deliberately slow is funds that came to the state and waiting to see exactly what the state was gonna do with some of their money. You know, now there's this infrastructure bill in Congress, whether it ever gets passed, I don't know. But if it gets passed, there's gonna be some big chunks coming out of that. And so our discussion internally has been, we need to start identifying some things. But we also need to do a little patience, see what the other other branches of government put out there that we might tap, so then we could use our money for something else.
Just thinking to the housing trust fund again, um, that's also structured as a method of home ownership. Um, and home ownership is not affordable for very low incomes because they can't afford the whole maintenance fees. So we would not want to in our um eagerness to support affordable housing, which I know all of us are passionate about. We would not want to um, forget that rental housing is super, super important because it enables an income to stretch further if you're not also having to worry about maintenance. So.
And also, I I don't wanna forget about the premium pay and looking at what we've received for report, uh, it may not have to come out of that. But it would also be uh, a good time this year to do another uh, one time pay supplement to uh, help our employees. The sheriff's office, their compositions are gonna get the three thousand dollars from the state. We can provide three thousand dollars to everybody else. I think that would go a long way too, you know, with them out. And like I said, it doesn't necessarily have to come out of ARPA funds if we have them somewhere else. And you also have new um, survey coming, we're gonna be doing. And never fully funded the last one. So if we're doing another one, we may wanna be thinking in our heads, let's hold a little bit back so we can catch our people up to the surrounding areas too. Instead of just giving them these Band-Aids, you know, three thousand dollars is nice, but it still is a Band-Aid and you don't take that into retirement.
We we could take that out this month. Yeah, there there's several pots we can add money for.
Yeah, yeah, either way. But yeah, yeah, as far as bringing them up, yeah, we definitely have to lose our own money.
I know I've heard several of you bitching that idea, and I could just tell you that over the past year. You know, there's still a lot of organizations, uh, state, federal especially. They haven't gone back to the office yet. They're still working remote. And outside of just a little short period of time when this thing first started, our folks have been here this whole time. And uh, uh, I know folks are tired. Anything, if the board's thinking something like that, I know that would be very much appreciated by the employees.
Is this something we could put on our next agenda?
Because I mean, if we're gonna move forward, I like to move forward, but forward. Yes, and the, especially those compositions.
Right.
They're gonna get paid before there's the end of November, right?
Yes.
So it would be good to have it done.
Remember, speaking on behalf of Mary, she would wanna make sure that the school division that some money is to share with their employees too. If we could do something for them, because they they have not gotten everything that the county employs. The pay, um, that's the comp or pay. We have to look at a six week period and then certain number of hours have to be worked in that six week period. We get to decide when the period ends. And we have talked about that internally because we need to do, if we don't do that, we won't get the funding from the state. And we of course want to support the off officers. But what would be ideal is if we can take, bring that to you. If you took action on that, we could get it processed and calculated and pay people with their November fifteenth pay. So it would be, we would have time if something was messed up a little bit, we need to correct somebody, we could do it before the end of November.
You talking about all employees?
Well, I was specifically talking about the sheriff's office, but it would be good to do them all at the same time. We would like to do them at the same time if we're gonna do them.
Yeah, I like to do them all at that.
That would give a lot of goodwill out of.
Tommy's here, I'm not flipping Tommy on the spot, but there may be some funds. I don't know what schools got, turns to our funds and other funds, we can find out. All right, last section we're gonna talk about tonight's funding, uh, school and county capital needs. As I said, we worked for a page forty last week, and so Angie's gonna go into that a little more detail tonight. Thank you.
Courtney covered a lot of ground last week, and so I wanted to um, have an opportunity. If you guys have looked over that and have questions about it, I can probably help with those. And also just highlight a couple of things that I thought he did. I think he did a really great job and presented a lot of information, but it was a lot to absorb at the same time. So um, a couple, I thought I would go over a couple of things that might clarify things just a little bit. He did go over six scenarios. He used three different borrowing amounts, and with each borrowing amount, you remember, he talked about unstructured versus structured. So I'm gonna talk about that a little bit more. And if he talked about our debt issuance constraints. And we, sometimes it's confusing to you guys because sometimes we don't use the same terminology. We'll we'll say capacity and we meet affordability, so I'm gonna explain what we really mean with the true definitions of those are. First, the structured and the unstructured. The unstructured debt is how it's like mortgage on your house or a car payment, pretty much. The debt payments are pretty much even every single year. The principal payment increases as the interest decreases. That's how the amortization of the debt occurs. And generally, the county issues debt in that fashion as well. Because in typical times, that makes the most sense afforded for primitive affordability aspect and a prudent use of our funds. Structured debt issuance, which we have done that in the past. If you you remember um, when we had to issue debt previously, it's Perry Creed came up with an idea that we would set pennies aside for school projects that we knew were gonna come on board. And so when we issued that debt, we were able to structure the payments. And the first few years, we had higher payment amounts, but we had set pennies aside and we could, we called it shaving the peak. And so we were able to cover that without increasing taxes as much as we would have otherwise. And it made sense in that case. Right now, the reason it makes sense is because of what we saw with his estimation of the interest rates, which Mark agrees with. If interest rates increase, it makes sense to borrow the money now and to pay a little bit more interest in the beginning to to meet the other criteria that we need to um, and get the projects moving. And the structured, again, the payments vary from year to year. The first two to four years in his scenarios had interest only payments. And then after that, principal payments began. And again, as I said, that is advantageous with the current interest rate market and what we anticipate to happen in the future years. We talked a lot about capacity, like everybody knows what that means. And I know you've seen the chart a whole, a lot of times um, of our debt service to expenditure ratio. I just wanted to talk about that a little bit, about what that means. Maybe you know exactly what it means, but it's the principal and interest payments for the year divided by our general fund. So the total general fund budget, not how much we give to schools, just how much we pay for the general fund items. Not what we pay for debt service either, just the general fund and the school operating fund, what those two budgeted amounts are. So if you take the total we're paying on our debt divided by those expenses, that's the ratio that we're talking about that needs to be between ten and twelve percent. Does that make sense? Affordability is about whether or not we can, and someone, I think Sarah asked last week about affordability. It's how much we can afford to pay debt service right now with the current funding. That can always change. It's your prerogative. It can go up, it can go down. But when we look at the affordability, we look at whether or not we can afford it with the amount that we're putting aside for debt service right now. Now I'm gonna go on to talk a little bit about the presentation talked about this.
You back to the last one. Uh, you said putting aside for debt service now. Is that what, yeah, is that what we're paying for debt service now? Or it's what we could pay for debt service now, and we're putting the extra somewhere else because I don't, I don't know what that means.
That's an excellent question. It's what we're budgeting for debt service right now. And right now, what we're budgeting for debt service in the current year, the schools um, didn't quite have enough to cover their debt service. And the county, what we had budgeted was more than we needed. So we made a one time decision for the county debt service budget to cover eight hundred thousand dollars of the school debt service expense in this current fiscal year. Right now, the county has funds in the debt service budget that we are accumulating that we can use those for cash to capital projects. Or when we issue debt, if we needed to structure, which we don't need to, but if we ever needed to, if something happened and we need to to issue a lot of money for a county project, we could shake debt with that. We're setting that aside in the debt service budget, and we keep track of how much the schools have set aside from previous years, which they do have about a million and a half dollars set aside in the debt service fund, and then how much the county has. And I don't know that number off the top of my head, but we do have funds as well.
Does that show up on on this part? The reserves or that's.
It's not included in that at all.
Yeah.
That because it's in the debt service fund and that's just general funds. You're welcome. So the county twenty million dollars, that addresses our most current needs. Um, we've recently requested departments provide marketing list of capital projects that that they need to have completed. And we also know that there are some priorities that the board has brought forward. Talk about those in a few minutes. It um, it is affordable for the county. We can issue twenty million dollars worth of debt and pay for that. It does not affect the capacity constraint, and it also lets us have capacity in the future. So that's why we didn't show you many scenarios for the county because ours is a little bit easier because we don't have as much debt as the schools do.
Does that mean that we might structure? No, unstructure for the county, but structure for the.
Okay, we would not structure the counties. We would only structure the schools. That's right. Some uh, projected uses for county for the twenty million dollars. And again, this could come out of the borrowing. If you wanted some of it to come out of the fourteen million dollars, we could look at that. There if some of this could be covered by ARPA, we don't think it it can be. But if somebody changes a rule and says that one of these items could be paid for, we have looked really hard to make sure that we can't pay for any of these with our ARPA funds. But completion of the Auburn Park isn't as a priority, the Shaw School Rescue Squad. Uh, we've talked for several years about renovating the sheriff's office. Their old building and um, the Sally Port area has been discussed, some as well internally. Land for future economic development, because as you know, we have phase two of falling branch, but that's what we've got. And after that, we'll need more. Uh, the demolition of the former garage area after our garage is completed and redeveloping that area somewhere somehow to make it attractive and a good use that the board would approve. And then there are some uh, government center improvements that we could do that will help us as we do grow. I know Craig's talked about the fact that our staff does appreciate pay increases, but we're also all full for all the time, and we could use some additional staff, but we need a place to put them. So it might mean that we would need to restructure some things in this building, redesign them a little bit and do some improvements there. Any questions before I start on the school part?
At some point in time, it'd be nice to have some dollar amounts next to estimated dollar.
We are working on those dollar amounts. We I can give you broad estimates for some of them, but thank you.
A little dangerous. That's a little dangerous.
Well, then I
Broad estimates without any kind of A and E done.
Will any of these have money set aside already?
No, well, you, we have the Auburn Park grading that is already going on, but the other funds are not specifically designated for any of these projects.
Well, I I remember, I think the Auburn Park, the full amount was six point nine.
Nine point four.
Wasn't it six?
Six point nine, I think.
Maybe it was nine point four with the vote combined. Okay.
And and the the first phase was what, two, two something?
That's right.
Well, we went.
It's about, I'll I'll tell you. Don't hold me to this forever, but we did go through this earlier. Five or six million dollars for the park, five or six million for the rescue squad. I don't have a real good number, it's about two million dollars. I'm getting that from the back row for the sheriff's office renovation. Future land for economic development, we've talked about five or six million for that. Demolition of the former garage and redevelopment of that property. We have two million as a placeholder. We don't know how much that would cost. We we really don't know, and a lot of that would depend on what we did with the property after the demolition occurred.
We had any hazmat inspections on that?
No. And then the the projects that have been thrown around, which I would rather not go into the detail of those right now because we don't know where that's gonna go when we don't run until an apartment. We're gonna redo your office, but we could easily spend a million dollars in this building reconfiguring offices.
The roof work on this building could easily be a half million to a million dollars, easy. That just, we did part of it. When we went over this list earlier, the short answer is we could burn through twenty million plus. We, yeah.
Um, but is the land for future economic development does not include grading or anything like that on the parcel that we have right now? Where does that money come from?
We we could pay for that from part of the fourteen million dollars. We could pay for it out of the bond issuance.
Buy less land, I mean, the.
I know you're saying that the two, no, I'm sorry, that five to six is for a whole nother parcel kind of. I know you're saying that the two, no, I'm sorry, that five to six is for a whole nother parcel kind of thing.
Okay, but it could be grading as well. One thing I will say about that, um if we issue debt. We, it's better to use the money that we have on hand for economic development projects because it's if we issue. Funds for debt. If we issue debt for economic development projects, they're taxable bonds and so the interest rates are not as good, so it's better for us if we issue. For other things and then use money that we have on hand for economic development projects.
It would be kind of a a miss to to spend five or six million dollars on land and then not have it pad ready. Because then it's not even marketable. I mean, it is marketable, but it would take, it would be very limited in how we would market it for economic development if it's not. Ready for somebody to drop a building on it.
And with quite a few of these bullets, we haven't done a lot of depth study on them yet, simply because the answer is that we don't have any money to do that. So we've got a lot of conceptual ideas, but if we could assure several folks that the money's going to be there, that we'll, we'll start nailing it down really fast.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So moving on to schools, we had two scenarios for the schools. Um one was for eighty million dollars. That addresses the estimate that was originally presented by the schools. They originally presented actually a little bit less than that and I can't remember what year that was, but it was about sixty-five to seventy-five million dollars. Oh, maybe we know.
Seventy-one to seventy-nine, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um. The eighty million dollars does meet the affordability constraint if we structure the debt as I spoke of earlier. And it will also meet the capacity constraint if we structure the debt. And the eighty million dollars let us retain future borrowing capacity for the schools. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. I know we've heard a bigger number from the schools. I don't know if you planted on my number, but we had the hundred billion dollar scenario as well and that would provide additional funding. It still meets the affordability and capacity constraints. It would require more structuring, but we could still meet those. Both of those constraints, but it will significantly reduce the future borrowing capacity for the schools if we went to a hundred million dollars.
I I I can tell on the graphs that are coming up what you mean by significant, but is there actually a measurement of significant? Of what's significant is?
Um, yes, I'm going to tell you in just one minute. If, first, if you look at this graph. Um you can see that in twenty twenty-seven, if we borrowed eighty million dollars for the school, it starts to bring up some capacity. That assumes everything plays out like we think it will and no one knows what interest rates will be in twenty twenty-seven. We don't have any idea. The crystal ball doesn't work for that. I don't know. So, you know, we're just assuming things stabilize. If we borrowed a hundred million dollars, you can see that um through twenty twenty-nine, there is almost no capacity. Capacity doesn't really become available until twenty thirty. And Sierra, I asked Courtney late today if he could quantify the the dollar amount. That would be freed up in each of those years and he's going to work on that and get that, so I'll get that to you guys tomorrow or the next day.
I think it's a, it's a, it's some other kind of measurement that says, oh, it's sort of like the the debt limit, the ten to twelve percent like. Or the amount of cash you should have on hand, five to ten million dollars. It's sort of like, you should always have X amount of debt capacity available. Within five years or something like that. I don't know.
There's the payout ratio. That might be what you're thinking about. I don't know for certain if that's what you're talking about. That talks about in your. Ten, you should have paid down this percentage of your debt.
Maybe.
That isn't really what this addresses. This addresses just whether or not we could afford to pay for debt service.
I guess the point is, is it's just two, two years more that you have to wait. And then you have, you know, a fair amount, but what's a fair amount versus not a fair amount? That's what I'm looking for.
Well, it depends on what projects the schools have on the horizon. That's what it would depend on. If they have some more projects that. Are going to follow right along behind Christiansburg High School, they might need to have more capacity if they're going to be good to go. For a period of time.
And that's, that's what we're trying to illustrate with these graphs is. You know, Courtney shared with you last week, we can make any of the scenarios work. The challenge is if you do the hundred million for schools. That basically tells the schools that until at least fiscal year twenty twenty-nine and all likelihood fiscal year twenty thirty. No more money for the other projects.
But it's sort of like, the question is, do you want to shortchange Christiansburg High School or not shortchange Christiansburg High School?
I don't think it's that black and white.
Or shortchange whatever the next projects are. Uh having way too actually years.
Remember, we moved forward two years on these other Christiansburg projects.
And we've been ahead of schedule.
Right here, I mean, it says sixty-seven to seventy-five million dollars. So eighty million dollars is.
How many years ago is that?
Well, it says sixty-seven million to seventy-five million dollars. With two point six increase a year. What's happened?
What year was that?
Seventeen, seventeen. What's happened on this project here is the school has added things to it after this.
As well as the cost of materials have gone up much more than two point whatever.
But I mean, they had added more to this project, is why it's over a hundred million dollars.
Well, they haven't told us what they've added. They haven't told us what they've added yet, have they?
They ain't told us, no. But where I'm going with this, some of us know. Where I'm going with this is if they were to stuck to the original program. There you go. That's what I'm saying. That's why it's over a hundred million dollars.
And and the Christiansburg strand wouldn't want to entertain the new ideas that they've had. They just want to stick to the four-year-old plan that they initially proposed. Is that what you're saying?
Oh, what I'm saying is we had a meeting at the high school, parents come out, everybody come out and looked, this what it is. So why would you throw more stuff in on a project knowing good and well? And all of us sit here and said, we got a very little. Capacity to borrow money.
I gotcha.
That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Yeah, because if you look at this chart, if you can, I I realize it's not. Super accurate, but uh if you look at twenty thirty and you see how high the line is, that's only like five million in capacity. And I don't think there's going to be any remodeling of elementary school for five million, I would say.
That's the debt service amount, so we could rip, how much can you borrow for five million dollars in debt service part?
Um.
Fifty, about fifty million.
Okay, I'm glad you clarified that because I had it all wrong.
It's, that's rough, fifty.
Well, and I know that the graphs are not exactly right, but if you look at eighty million, you don't get five million capacity, it's almost thirty, thirty-one.
That's right.
We already know that there's another elementary school in Blacksburg that.
Blacksburg have several that were designed on the same plan, well, not several, Margaret Beeks and uh Gilbert Lake.
Well, and and this is a, we say all this to.
It's way younger than those.
We s- we say all this to you just to say that, you know, what Courtney shared with you last week is we have the. Capacity and the affordability. Our funds now with the hundred million and requires restructuring. However, we've talked internally or Mark earlier tonight too, generally, I'm not a big fan of structuring debt. However, with where construction costs are, appear to continue to increase and the likelihood that interest rates are going to increase. I can support some, some structuring to get into the market sooner so that we don't get the debt on the back end with higher construction costs. Higher interest rates, which would more than eat up, you know, structuring costs. Philosophical discussion, that's nothing to do with the numbers, the philosophical discussion that this board needs to have is. What are you comfortable committing? To the debt package to provide schools?
And how much again did you spend on Blacksburg?
Sixty-two or sixty-four, it was low, sixty-two million dollars.
In what year?
Two thousand fourteen.
And I would like to add, if we do the hundred million, we'll have to do more structuring. So when we structure and we pay interest only for for a period of time, we're paying more to borrow that money. We have to structure significantly. More to borrow that extra twenty billion dollars. So it's not, I didn't want you to think that there was no additional cost. It's good, the debt. Principle will start getting paid later, so it will cost more overall.
One thing we've looked at, not made any decisions, but one thing we've looked at, correct me if I'm wrong. Is you're setting two and a half cents aside now for schools and that's going for dollars to build for future capital. It may be if you do the hundred million, we have to use some of those two and a half pennies to help structure the debt and not keep contributing. During that period of time to additional capital, we just turn that towards the debt, so you don't have to raise taxes.
That defeats the purpose of setting the money aside.
We've said it's to be used for capital, so.
Yeah.
That's the key for that, for raise taxes.
I mean, yeah, that's the philosophical discussion.
Yes, it is.
That you want to back away from, but that is the philosophical discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
The only other slide I have on this is, I already covered this, I think, um. The only recommendation we're making, we're not recommending anything about which which scenario to borrow under, but we would recommend that structuring is appropriated in this. For the schools. The other questions?
If you do a structure, you got to have X amount of dollars upfront, right?
Well, what happens if you structure is, say we borrow the eighty million dollars, the first two years, I believe it is, we would pay only interest. So we would just be paying interest on what we borrowed.
I mean, upfront. You don't have to have no money upfront.
That's, no, we do not. Not under either one.
Because we're issuing the debt.
That's right, and we don't, yeah, right, and we can do it without raising taxes and if we can figure out a way to cover those bumps in the very beginning.
Notice, you want to share all this with you tonight, don't have to, certainly don't have to have a decision tonight, because we thought this was very important. Have further discussion on this because we know tomorrow night you're going to rejoin people with the school boards, so you're going to hear their thoughts. Excuse you an opportunity to start to formulate thoughts and questions you may have for them. What we would like to do, I don't know if we'll do it next Monday or. We'll do a pop, an agenda review, is when do we bring this back? The board for starting to firm up the numbers so we can start working on what we're going to.
Can we do that quickly because the interest rates are going up?
We, we could, you know, we could schedule it as early as October twenty-fifth if there seems to be a consensus in the board or will we be kicking for person of the.
We. We would likely not issue debt until the spring. Courtney and his team are watching the interest rates very carefully and if they say. They're going to go up quickly, the market's changing, we would bring that to you, but um.
I just want to be ready for that.
We are ready, we are ready and we'll let you know if we need to borrow sooner than that.
Because we don't have to have all the questions answered before we borrow, like we don't have to say we're going to issue debt for this, this, this and this, exactly, right?
For the county side?
Yeah.
That's correct. We can have a few projects that we know and then we'll, we can say other county projects, other governmental, general government projects. But if we issue the debt before ready to spend it, we have to be careful about. This is probably not the case right now either, but there are arbitrage requirements, which is related to how much interest you earn versus how much you're paying. And the rates are so low right now that we probably would earn a lot of interest on the proceeds, but but when you issue tax exempt debt. You're saying we're ready to start, so because the the IRS does not want you to issue tax exempt debt and then. Sit on it and earn interest that is counter to what they request and require. So we would need to be close to ready to go with the projects, but if it's going to. We feel like the timing will play out so that that's not going to be an issue, but I would not recommend that we issue right now unless something dramatic.
Well, Courtney's saying, not issue now, but issue in the spring potentially, so we just want to be completely ready. I mean, it's understandable that on the county side, you know, it seems like we could get to a pretty. Uh a consensus there easier than on the school side. But I wouldn't want to lose the opportunity on the school side and let the interest rates go up just because. We decided to just kind of keep that and this thing back and forth and back and forth until it was dead and then.
He has people at his firm whose sole job is to track that, to track the bump governmental bond market and what interest rates are, if bonds are selling or not, so he. They're doing that for us and he, we talk about that frequently about the timing of that and we're, we're very aware of that, so we will keep you posted.
And when he says spring, is that April, is that February, is that May, do you know?
Um it.
What does he say?
February is not spring, but I would say it, it would be April, May. The, if things progress as the schools are thinking, they'll be ready maybe in August to start work. Is that?
Yeah, July, August.
So it would be a few months, a month or two before that if we don't need to issue it earlier. The, the longer we can wait, if the rates stay okay, the better off we are because of when the first payment will be due and how much interest will accrue before that.
Craig, at our meeting tomorrow, will we share this information with the school board?
We, the agenda tomorrow night is the s- the schools are going to share their latest information on Christiansburg High School. And we'll be available to share what we've heard from Courtney. We presented a couple of options from the affordability and capacity standpoint. If they're doable, you know, it's a challenge if you go to the higher amount, hundred million, is it really limits uh the ability to borrow for a number of years for other school capital projects? Uh and again, it's just a philosophical discussion that this board's got to determine, what are you comfortable with? We shared with our board tonight some of that same information. So from our side, our presentation includes a lot of what Courtney said. And where things are, we used a four percent interest rate, for example, twenty-year bond, calculated all the capacity issues, so we'll, we'll, it's out there, our board is. Um I think not everybody's on agreement, but I think you'll be very happy with, I think the majority.
Question. Um and it's kind of pulling everything together, all three presentations, where I have questions that bridge all of them. Um in the ARPA. Um presentation, slide number four, uh when Mark was discussing that, he was talking about. Um the revenue loss being calculated on December thirty-first, so that is calculated on a calendar year, not a fiscal year basis, why?
Because the federal government said that's what to do and I don't have any better answer. Not, not all.
Thanks, that makes it really clear for all of us, federal government.
Not all states though have a June thirtieth year end, some states have a different year end.
It is not twelve months either, it's like an eighteen month.
Cool, that's awesome. We're so glad you're here, Mark. Um. And then in the what other, what are other localities doing slide, I may not have picked up on this clearly. Um other localities are investing in tours and in parks, but it is your opinion that the uh guidance does not allow. but it is your opinion that the, uh, guidance does not allow that? Or do you think it would allow that for the Auburn Park, for example?
It depends.
Oh, cool, okay. I love all these answers.
I'll give you an example, okay? If, if we had tourism issues in Montgomery County, and to mitigate those issues because of the pandemic, the board decided that they wanted to build a park to generate tourism, and it was gonna do tournaments and bring people in, I think you could make an argument that you were mitigating, because COVID created a problem for tourism, you're doing this to bring tourism back.
So I think, I mean, we know that the restaurants and lodging packs are down, so there's a a, uh, yellow, we'll say, argument for that. Um, also, could the argument that we know we have a capacity issue um, in our parks currently for our recreational activities, for our sports, especially for our soccer, um, you know, football, baseball, we know we have capacity issues. We know that the teams are not able to get out as much as they had before. Could you make an argument on that train as well?
If I was doing
Don't say maybe.
No, 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 if I was doing the green, yellow, red, you're leaning towards the red.
Okay.
All right, I think you might be orange right there.
All right, gotcha, gotcha. Um, ARPA funds that the schools received, could those be used for capital?
Yes, ma'am, they can.
Okay, and I'm sure we'll hear about that tomorrow.
We'll hear about it tomorrow night, ten million to thirteen point five that we received.
Okay. Um, Angie, could you, what does the sheriff's office need again?
What do they need?
For the renovation?
It's the old building, the old building that's vacant.
In that presentation, I guess you just looked, and I thought about it.
I was thinking like
I'm sorry, not the public safety building.
I wrote, what question?
The old sheriff's office, the former sheriff's office is what I
We spent fifteen thousand on a new air conditioner for the empty building.
Yeah.
To keep the ground till we do something with it, yeah.
Okay, that's right.
We already got the
Well, guys, all right.
We've talked about it.
Yeah, we did too.
We've never appropriated money. We've talked about it, but we never set much
And this fourteen million carry forward can be used for capital projects if the board chooses.
Yes. That's all, thank you.
And since you did, you said sheriff's office, that's my lead in, on the, on the comp funding for the, uh, the compositions. You need a consensus tonight to go ahead and move forward with calculating for everyone, all our employees.
You can if you want to, but we'll have to appropriate the funds, but
I think we can find out what the numbers are. Is that what you're asking? Do we wanna know what the numbers are? Yeah, let's get the numbers.
We could
It's one point one billion dollars.
For what?
Three thousand dollars for full-time employees who have worked a certain, there are stipulations, all these rules. Within six weeks, you have to have worked a certain number of hours, and we calculated that as of now, and it would cost about one point one million dollars for non-sport deputies. We would need to pay, the part that we have to pick up
Do we have a three thousand dollars a person?
That's a forever
But that's not significant, that's for the other people.
Full-time employee.
Every full-time employee and part
Have a lot of deputies.
And half of that for part-time employees that meet a certain criteria. We would have to pay a little bit for the comp board positions, but it's like eighty-six thousand dollars, it's not much. Are the schools planning on doing any?
None of the compensation side.
Angie had a question on the art funding, um, we talked about, um, supporting public health response. Is there any way we can tie in Charlottesville Rescue or the emergency service? I mean, one of the reasons that we need the, a new ambulance and to answer those calls is because we don't have volunteers, and a lot of the volunteers were college kids that left because of COVID.
But we've tried really hard to do that, but we can't.
From orange?
That one's pretty much red.
Yeah, we did try. We looked really hard and tried to find lots of different angles, and we don't, it's red.
Even if the ambulance, uh, served as a mobile vaccination unit?
I don't know, Mark looks a little upset.
We'll put a big hypodermic needle inside of it.
Mark, Mark walks in, and being Angie, you're talking sometimes, and we'll go, well, what about?
Certainly, the, the rescue squad itself is a priority, uh, because that, that has a bearing on recruitment, and besides that, it's, uh, the building's atrocious.
It is.
I can't, there's no better word for it, it's atrocious. So, but now as far as being firm on which direction we wanna go for paid staff, I don't think we're there yet. Still, we're still we're still, yeah, we're still looking at.
And that would be ongoing cost, except for the truck, so we would need to pay for that with something that we knew was gonna continue.
Thrown a lot at you tonight, any last questions?
Can't thank you enough, it was incredible.
We really appreciate you guys voting in line just to talk about this, because the board meetings, we have all these other issues to talk about as well, and it's, it's, it's hard to just focus on the funds. I really appreciate Angie and Mark.
Anything else for work session? Is there a motion to come out? Any discussion?
Supervisor Shepard? Supervisor Blevins?
Hi.
Supervisor King? Supervisor DeMott?
Hi.
Supervisor Vaughn?
Hi.
Sheriff Pachowski?
Hi.
Is there any other issues that you need to bring?
I should have mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting. We did off-stream and video this for tonight, so Mary's still in route, so hopefully she'll have a chance. We'll try to catch up sometime tomorrow, but if we don't catch up, she has time, she can see what we've talked about tonight too, so.
Well, hearing nothing. We're adjourned.